As soon as, uh, government after six o'clock will call these October third, two thousand and sixteen council meeting. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Barnett, Mr. Austin.
Here.
Mr. Abbott.
Yeah.
Mr. Holt.
Here.
Mr. Eggers.
Here.
Mr. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Wurk.
Sir, your number four.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, indication of pleasure, be with you, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, by our heads, please. Good word, thank you for the day you've given us, Lord, thank you for all the blessings you've seized upon. There have been individuals here and members of our city, where we ask you to please be with our first responders and their families. We ask you to be with all the people that are struggling in the world today. Lord, we ask you to please, uh, be with our army, uh, military, specifically, and their families as well. We hope you keep them in your guiding light. Or we ask this in your name, pray amen.
Amen.
Rest in peace. This is the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Under announcements, public comments, uh, this evening, uh, we have, I have the honor and privilege of swearing in our newest firefighter, Cody Parrot. And I see his family is with him today, so if you would, um, Mr. Parrot, can I be with fire chief, any form of that, if you'd like to apply?
Cody started about, what, two months ago? Uh, Cody and President Stark both started the same day. Uh, now we're back to full staff here at the, uh, department. And hopefully next, uh, council meeting, uh, President Stark, uh, today. So next council meeting, we're swearing in President Stark that way, Sam.
If you would, please raise your right hand, sir. I'll try to chop it down, may it serve for you. I, Cody Parrot.
I, Cody Parrot.
I've been appointed to be also my office of firefighter in the City of Franklin Fire Department. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution, the state of Indiana, and the rules and regulations of the Franklin Fire Department. I swear that I will obey all lawful orders of my superior officers and faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best my ability. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations to you, family.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, we have a discussion of board works meeting, I think, uh, Ms. Klein is still back there, discussion of Wayne Street construction.
I may get this because I think some emails went to council members, too.
Gotcha.
Hello, my name is Sharon Klein. Thank you for letting me speak today. Uh, we are, we asked for this meeting today to discuss the construction project and its impact, um, on the Wayne Street Pocket Park. Um, first of all, uh, I would again like to begin, uh, by saying that we wish, um, Steve Barnett a speedy recovery. We were fortunate enough to have a meeting with Steve Barnett and Council Representative Brad, uh, excuse me, Brad Staley of Crossroad Engineering, and they allowed us to meet with them and voice our concerns this Wednesday. My request to speak to you at tonight's meeting is a result of that meeting with them. However, on Friday, I received an email from Mayor McGinnis after he had met with some of the concerned residents, and in his email, he stated that he had an alternate solution. He stated that after meeting with city, the city and the BMS group, the proposed parking lot that was proposed on the Wayne Street Pocket Park was not needed at this time. For that, we thank you, Mr. McGinnis, Mayor McGinnis, sonny. He went on to say that if parking became necessary in this area, it would be a public parking lot and not a private one. However, I would like to say at this time, um, it's imperative to clear up any misconceptions about our petition. Those who signed the petition, which was taken to the mayor's office two weeks ago, were already under the belief that the proposed lot would be a city of Franklin public parking lot. So I think their feelings remain the same. It was only later that we found out the original use was for private condo parking. Additionally, in his email, the mayor said that our previous comments would be remembered and new comments would be sought if more parking was needed. And we would be grateful for an opportunity to provide public input into parking solutions should they become necessary in the future. Like you, we believe that it is extremely important to keep the public informed about what is happening in our community, and we believe that government transparency is key in doing this. I want to thank all of you for your time, and I also would like to ask the mayor or whoever's responsible, um, on Friday, um, actually, two park trees did get red paint to be cut down. I'm sure it was prior to this decision. Um, I, I just would like someone in your office to make sure that it's communicated that, um, these are not the dead ash tree that you referred to. They are two beautiful, mature maple trees that have the red mark on them to be cut, and I just don't want that to have it inadvertently.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I know there was, there has been a lot of communication between Travis Underhill, the city engineer, and the folks who are down there, the contractor and the inspection engineer. So, uh, I appreciate the opportunity, uh, had conversation with a couple of, uh, Wayne Street neighborhood folks, Travis Underhill and Chip Warner. I met with them on, met with you guys on Friday afternoon, um, had a good conversation, and it was kind of a last minute conversation. So we're trying to get as many people as we could, and two were available, and less, and so, uh, and that's why I, I had, I think I had six emails total, and you were one of them. And so I sent out the message that we put together, um, to those sixty million addresses that I have, hoping that you guys can all help me disseminate that to the appropriate folks. But those are the sixty million addresses I have, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, public comments? I can actually give an update on Mr. Barnett if anyone is interested. Uh, most of you probably all know that he was involved in a pretty serious racing accident Saturday night, um, down in Bryanstown Speedway. And I saw him, uh, about noon, one o'clock today. I'm sure neither of them had an opportunity to go visit with him and see him in the hospital. He's, uh, recovering from surgery, had surgery yesterday. He has a fracture in a couple of his vertebrae, had surgery, is recovering, also has a broken cog on and a broken nose. Um, and he's pretty bruised and beat up, uh, much more than a bar fight. It was, uh, it was a pretty bad, uh, accident, and, uh, he's recovering, doing well, he's up and moving around. He should be made even by now, moved out of intensive care, supposed to be sometime this afternoon or this evening. Moved out of intensive care into a regular hospital bed at Saint Vincent's. So they're talking about discharge if everything goes well. Discharge from the hospital sometime later on this week. Uh, but he'll have quite a few weeks, probably months, of rehabilitation, physical therapy, to get him back to where he wants to go racing again, so. So he'll, he'll be, uh, I don't know when he'll be back to the council, but for right now, um, he's pretty disappointed. He's not here, and he wishes he could be here, but, uh, told me he was gonna try to get an email to, uh, to see he has in regards to the budget, uh, in support of the budget, the most recent conversation. But, uh, I told him that it's probably not likely because he has no access to phone or computer, and so. But he's, he is doing much better than I think what most of us thought or heard on Saturday, so he's doing all right.
Mayor, is it Saint Vincent's?
Yes.
Okay, is it, which one, what location?
Uh, West eighty-sixth street.
Where's eighty-seven?
Yep, yep. All right, any other vote comments? Harry, what was on that, fortunately? Next is consent agenda.
Mayor, would, uh, the consent agenda be approved as distributed second?
Motion by Austin, second by Eggers. I guess I want to get over the motion by Barnett, then choose what I have to say, so I'll get through that one. Next is, I'm sorry, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to whole business.
Move to read all, under old business by title only, second?
Motion by Eggers, second by Fox, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First is common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-ten, the City of Franklin and Indiana budgetary ordinance fixing and authorizing the payment of certain salaries of appointed officers and employees for year twenty-seventeen. This is specifically for the civil city employees. Much conversation, uh, occurred a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting, um, trying to, you know, what direction are we gonna go? Uh, how is this gonna work, particularly for those employees that are on the lower end of base scale? And so, kind of, started thinking this thing through after that meeting, and, and started putting some numbers on the paper and into Excel spreadsheets, and seeing what impacts would it have, not only to the employees, but also to the, to the bottom line for our budget. And so I started, started with that process, and, um, most of you, I think, all have at least responded and have reviewed, seen, uh, what that proposal would be. And so I'm gonna, uh, throw this out there for now for discussion, for comments, um, and hopefully to vote. Uh, this is, this is can be voted on tonight if you guys would choose. Um, the concept was to accept the budget and the salary ordinances as it is, as it has been presented with a three percent raises. We would then go back in, and I've had several conversations with Ms. Fros and the, and the Court Treasurer's office, would then go back in, uh, and bring back in front of you what had not the two thousand and seventeen salary ordinance today or tonight, as it's been presented, would bring back to you in November and December, an amended twenty-seventeen salary ordinance, which would impact those employees that are making between, after the three percent, that were making between thirty thousand and forty thousand, and then fifty thousand, or in forty thousand and fifty thousand. So those between, there's no one hundred and thirty thousand today. So once you add in three percent, those that are still making between thirty and forty thousand would receive an additional two percent. Those that are between forty and fifty thousand after the three percent adjustment would receive an additional one percent. Those that are fifty and above would, would stay flat with the three percent adjustment as it's been presented tonight. The total impact with, um, FICA and PERF and all the benefits that tie in with salaries is right around thirty-seven thousand dollars total. I think it was thirty-seven thousand, one hundred, one hundred, somewhere in that range. Total impact would be, in addition to the budget, um, as you all know, the budget has been constructed in a, in a mayor that would, already generates about a five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar, uh, surplus. So that thirty-seven thousand dollars obviously is an impact to that, but not a significant impact, really. So that, that to me, I think was fair and was reasonable after listening to everyone's comments and concerns. I think this addresses some of those, some of those things. Obviously, we have to, we have to continue to do some additional work, uh, to get us through the twenty-seventeen budget.
I think this, I think you did a good job on that, 'cause I know, you know, my feelings on it, we talked, you know, last month, that's close what you did, and it was, I, I can accept it.
Mayor, I apologize, I was out of the country last meeting, I normally try not to miss these type meetings, but I didn't think it. I was, when I heard that your, uh, initial response was, this is my budget taken to do, I was a little bit taken back.
Not exactly what I was.
Okay, um, but, and I thought, you know what, I mean, we've been talking about trying to help, um, some of the lower-paid employees for this is the third year. And, and there's no easy way to go about doing it, that's the hard part, you know, because, okay, there's the buyer, there's the fact that, you know, we have higher-paid employees that are affected that may not get the increase that we're talking about, trying, trying to bump them up there. And I hope everyone understands that when we do that, we're not trying to, to say that Rick Littleton isn't worth the five percent, he's only worth three. That's not, that's not my point, and I don't think that's other councilmen that are proposing to try to help out some of the lower-paid employees. Rick, I'm just using your as employees love you. So, I, I just, I want everybody to know that that's not our intention to try to signal out individuals, pointing a finger and saying, this is about you and your salary. No, it's not, it's about each people's salary. And, and I've been trying for, this is the third year, to talk about it and to bring up the discussion when you kick the can, uh, but we have given raises. And I appreciate that, but Mayor, thank you for coming back with, uh, something. Well, I guess my point is that you're, you're listening, and I appreciate that.
I know, I also received word, uh, I think we all have had conversations with Mr. Wurk, obviously, he's not unable to listen. That was planned absence, obviously, Mr. Barnett's was not planned, but Mr. Wurk's was planned, and so he had, uh, talked to me a couple of different times. I think most of you, at least, corresponded via email, that, um, he's also in support. When it was presented, he made out some, a lot of facts about sightings of the past and raises and such things.
Mayor, if I could just interject, I think it's important that we get to a, a, a point where we do some sort of a, a study. And I know, Joe, we, we've talked about this before, we mentioned it last time we were at the last meeting, uh, David attended, and mentioned that, you know, we've tried to do this unsuccessfully for over a decade, and I think maybe in your case, maybe two decades, where you tried to approach it in a, in a different manner to try to determine, uh, department heads' values, uh, employees' values, uh, what that pays out on the market in a city our size, and, and I think that needs to be done. I think if we don't do that, we're gonna continue to be coming back every year where we're at and, and splitting hairs and upsetting people, and that's not our intention.
I think, I know one of the things we talked about last meeting was performance review, and, and this was, you presented how hot that was for the top heads, you know, do something like that. The only way we can do perform, I thought about this this last meeting, the only way we can do performance reviews to take that away from the, uh, department head. We'd have to have an HR person, and we'd have to, we'd have to put, and let that HR person put together, you know, what an excellence is, what's conceived is, what's me. And, you know, too, that, you know, you're failing the system a lot, you barely get by and that type of stuff. And that's the necessity of a big job, you know, to have something like that. But that's the only way I can see us getting around if we went to a performance review type of, um, you know, hey, hey.
It's not only performance review, but also where we've got written out what our job performance, or what our job times are, the responsibilities are. That's right, and I know that that's probably two subjects, I guess.
That's what I'm saying, that's, 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 that's.
How many employees do we have, Joe, now?
One sixty-six.
Okay.
Full-time.
Full-time. So, you know, in the near future, does the city need a human resource manager? And that's something maybe we need to discuss in the future. If, uh, insurance and, and everything it takes to put an employee through with, with PERF, all, every, you know, maybe we're getting a situation where we need to start looking. I don't know, I don't know what our answer is, but I think that needs to be discussed. It costs nothing to thaw. So, make people mad. Yeah, and I, I've had a couple of conversations with the mayor and conversations with councilmen, and I fully support, as I said last meeting, I fully support three percent increase, uh, you know, listening to the concerns of some of the senior council people. Um, uh, and then the mayor coming up with this program of, you know, how do we, how do we do this? I fully support that. Uh, one of the things that I would like to see, and I don't know if this is possible, but, um, in two thousand and seventeen, I would like for us to create some kind of a salary review committee, maybe. Um, if we, you know, the HR, I don't know where that falls in, I don't know how that, what timing after that falls in, but I would like to see maybe a, a salary review committee put together. I don't know who that's made up of, there was a lot of talking, still need to happen, but, um, that we talk about this, you know, through the year, and we look at everybody, and I told the mayor, one of the things that I was concerned about was, is that, uh, we talked about the lower end, but, you know, there, to me, there's a lot of middle layer people that, um, you know, I think we, that need to be looked at as well. I think we're addressing that to some degree now, but, um, I think we just, this committee, hopefully, would look into that deeper and we catch better answers as we hit the budget time, so. I fully support what was proposed tonight. Ten at the end of this term, it will be two and a half days.
Wow. I know, it's close.
And I apologize for not being at the last meeting, I was underwater in the Caribbean somewhere at that time, so. But, this council for the past twenty-some years has struggled with this, and we've tried different avenues. We've tried the, the, uh, committees, uh, that review the, uh, the job titles. And we've gone through two or three generations of, uh, rewriting job titles, trying to make it fair as we can. We've gone through stipends, we've gone through various percentage raises, we've kicked around ideas of how to be as fair as we can and everything. What it boils down to is you do the best you can for the citizens first and for the employees, because we are beholden to the citizens first. But when it all boils down to, or what it all boils down to is we, we write these job descriptions, and people apply for these jobs. And if they follow the job description and we fund that, that particular job description to a, let's just throw out a number of thirty thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars per year, that's what that job is worth.
Sure.
And if that, that individual wants to shoot for a job that's sixty thousand dollars a year, then they need to pursue that habit. It shouldn't be on the shoulders of the taxpayers to, uh, someone's yearly income just, just because the Franklin City Council doesn't seem to have the cojones to, to, to say what they're saying. Life isn't fair all the time. Now, what we're proposing here is, is something that is not fair to a behalf of the employees in City of Franklin.
It's not geared towards them, though.
It's not geared towards them. Well, just, just didn't hear what I've said. I, I understand what you're trying to do. We've been trying to do it for many, many years, and we've never got it right yet. It's a difficult thing to do, but with, when you have a job description that calls for a particular salary, then that's what it is. And you try to be fair to everyone.
Sure.
This doesn't quite work the same way as the private sector, because I've been doing the private sector longer than two and a half days.
Right.
But, um, I can go along with three percent rates for everyone. I just have an issue with, with giving some employees a benefit that other employees haven't yet, um, through no fault of their own. To me, that, that degrades the incentive of some employees to do good work. It might increase the incentive of other employees, but it's an imbalance that we're talking about here. That's just my own opinion, and I, I try to look at it as logical as I can. But I think the mayor tried to do a, a little negotiation here, or, uh, and, and tried to split hairs, which, which I appreciate that. I, I think did a good job of it. Uh, I did not even think of, of doing something like that. I prefer, I prefer that we can find some way to do a performance-based, uh, increase where, whether that be an HR person or, so it all on the mayor's shoulders, I don't know, but.
Do they have private firms that do that, Joe?
I believe they do, yeah.
That, look at the city, I don't know if you've seen anything like that.
Uh, but I would prefer that myself. Uh, I think that's fair, and, and that gives everyone a chance to, to increase however much they want to through their own efforts. But, uh, one thing that the city has always fallen back on is across-the-board increase, and I think that's necessary to do in a situation as the city is in. Unless we go to a performance-based.
I'm of two minds on this. On one hand, I, I agree with you, Joe, that, um, I, I'm not a big fan of giving, um, arbitrary raises in, in terms of splitting it up, uh, in terms of how much they, they make. Uh, that being said, I think this is at least a step in the right direction. Uh, we spoke last time, uh, last meeting, uh, that this discussion needs to happen well before the month that, you know, we, the month before we'd have to have it in to the state. Uh, I mean, this, this should be a discussion started in February, not, not July, uh, or, or even August. But I do think this is at least a step in the right direction. I think all of our employees are a little underpaid for the jobs they do, be that the department head or, or the, the part-time labor. I said last time, I wish we could give everybody a pretty significant bump, but, um, one, it's not financially feasible, and two, it's, it's irresponsible of us to do that. But I, I think this is at least, for the time being, a step in the right direction.
Mayor, um, what's your thoughts about, so the comments you heard, we talked about, uh, performance-based, uh, you know, do we need to budget a, uh, company, a corporation, someone that does this for a living that could come in and string like this for us?
Yeah, you know, there are professional HR firms out there, that's just what they do, is actually one in Greenwood, Route sixty-five, that's pretty well-known, uh, in the state of Indiana, tells an HR. I don't know to what extent they do, you know, performance-based, or performance reviews. I certainly know that they handle payroll and, you know, what the court treasurer's office a lot of times, sure, have to be doing. Don't have any problem, you know, reaching out to some of those folks and finding out who does that, if anyone does that, and the government entities. Uh, I think it becomes, uh, performance reviews become difficult when you get into police and fire, um, with having their pay based on performance reviews. Especially, we would all like to do that. It becomes very difficult when you get into their nineteen-seventy-seven police and firefighter pension program and, and, uh, their pension as a, as a whole becomes quite difficult to navigate if we have varying levels of first-class patrol and, and first-class firefighters and those kind of things. But, you know, certain officers being paid more than others that are the same class, not sergeant, lieutenant, and things. So, I have no problem, uh, exploring that avenue, having that conversation. I, I really don't know about police and fire, but the others, I can check into. I've mentioned it a couple of times, being emailed that, um, incentive-based is also something that's that's intriguing to me, that if you attain a certification or a degree that's specific to your job, that makes you a little bit more educated, makes the city then becomes a little bit more efficient and a little bit more knowledgeable, that we can compensate you for that, whether it's an AICP certification, or it's a bachelor's degree, or it's a certification of Westpart Treatment Plan, whatever that may be.
Mayor, I don't know if that makes sense.
Mayor, I'll clarify one point, I thought you were talking about civilian employees. I agree, we cannot do that with a pay-per-fee-based pay scale with, with police and fire, number one, you can get into legalities with the police department and the court system. So, I don't believe that police and fire, if you had our country, organizations would be able to be performance-based. I, I thought this was discussed recently.
I'm throwing it all out there. So tonight, what's, what is in front of you for approval or, or kicking it back is the three percent raises, and like I said, we'll bring back probably in November, I don't know what our meetings are in November, which will take two ratings, would, would be amended 2017 salary ordinance to adjust those that are still within the thirty, forty, forty, fifty range. We'll then come back, sometime back in the first of the year, we'll need to be, and the officers plan to line the budget, come back the first of the year with an additional appropriation, requesting those dollars that have been unappropriated to be appropriated towards the respective momentary areas within those departments. So the first one is common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-ten. This one is particular to the appointed officers and employees for 2017. This is specifically for civil city. Next one, if you look at, obviously, this one is for civil city.
May I make a motion to approve common council budgetary ordinance of sixteen-nine-ten?
Second.
Motion by Abbott, second by Austin. This is also, maybe we did it last night, too, but we'll remember public comment. Questions, comments? Here you go, please, public carry. We have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
So, the motion carries for, for the F five and nine, for one. Next item is common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-eleven, City Franklin, Indiana budgetary ordinance fixing and authorizing the payment of certain salaries of appointed officers and employees for year 2017. This is for, specifically for sewer utility.
Move to approve this presentation.
Second.
motion by Eggers, second by Austin. Anyone have a comment? Hear them? The motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next item is common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-twelve, City Franklin, Indiana budgetary ordinance fixing annual salaries and providing compensation for all elected officers, I'm sorry, officials for year 2017.
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Abbott, second by Fox. Any other comments? Hear them? The motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-thirteen, a budgetary appropriation and tax rate ordinance for year 2017. So this is the budget in its entirety.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Eggers, second by Austin. Other comments? Hear them? Those opposed comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries five, zero. Next is common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-fourteen, additional appropriation from park infrastructure capital. This is money from park impact fees in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred seventy-four. This order is here, and this was presented to you all a couple of weeks ago. This is for the Blue-Haired Secretary?
Correct.
Correct, Mayor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Eggers, second by Abbott. Any public comments? Questions from the council? Hear them? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Chip came up and asked for more.
Oh, he's about to. Common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-fifteen, transfer appropriations from Board of Works unemployment compensation to cemetery part-time staff in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. As a reference last meeting, we always have money set aside within the Board of Works budget for unemployment claims, compensation claims. In this case, this order is supposed to be the two thousand dollars to get to the end of the year, because basically, if we don't keep that around and shift into work, we will be putting unemployment compensation.
I move to approve the common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-dash-fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Austin. Any public comments? Hear them? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? carries five, zero. The next is common council ordinance number sixteen-ten, ordinance creating and authorizing the use of growing run grant fund.
This was brought for you last meeting, and all it is is just make, so that we can open funds for the growing grant that builds our target.
Building our targets, and the grant, and work is already started. This is just housekeeping maintenance. We've stepped here to put a fund aside for the.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay.
Motion by Abbott, second by Fox. Any other comments? Hear them? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Here's by the field. Next is new business. Motion to read by the alone.
Motion read by the alone, second.
Motion by Austin, second by Eggers. All those in favor?
Aye.
First item is common council ordinance sixteen-eleven, an ordinance of the city, or, I'm sorry, the common council of City Franklin, authorizing investment in public funds for citizens in the area of five dash thirteen dash nine dash five point seven.
This is nothing but housekeeping, we do it every year, it just gives the pressure to get authority to invest funds.
No, this is introduction only, thank you. You said to the statutory provisions, and I've cited there, there are restrictions. Well, that's meaning to invest the city's funds, for good reason, obviously. We have to, we invest about twenty-five percent, although it's mine restrictions, and we can't put money out that would be available in the, so this ordinance has written to simply here is what you've done in the past, but also does make reference to those duties as mine, so that you all know what to talk regarding the investment policies. And then it corrects the Court Treasurer to be the one who makes those determinations and accounts back to you, in any case, there are questions.
Question, any? Okay, that was introduction, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Next item is common council budgetary ordinance number sixteen-sixteen, authorizing additional appropriation to appropriate funds for an insurance reform check.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is our request to appropriate funds from the two hundred supplies and nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty, and we'll use the funds to purchase ratings. I'll entertain any questions.
Again, you'll stay here in a couple of weeks.
Great presentation.
No other business, so we'll go into council comments.
Great job for the city, for the employees that hosted the festivals we're doing, very nicely.
Put out really nice. And the fireworks location, I don't know, all I've heard is rabid reviews, and that should stay exactly right there. But now, I think Chip's been here as well, and I was the first one, Chip's walked out. Yeah, and I think I should be one, Paul Teslum, too.
You got close as yet.
We may have to budget a little bit. We're gonna do a little bit.
There are few photographs online of that there, they were gorgeous.
Jane, did I miss, there was a couple?
No, I don't know. I'm looking, okay.
Okay. There was a couple.
There's one that I'm, I don't know. There is one.
Sixteen twenty, it's signatures.
Oh, signatures, yes. Any other council member comments? All right, anybody want to hang around afterwards, make sure you've got all, everything signed? With that being said, I think we'll have to hang around. The motion, any more still, Jane?
Second.
Motion by Abbott, second by Eggers, all those in favor?
Aye.